All right. One and good evening and welcome to the City of North Plains City Meeting Monday, November 7, 2022 at 7 o'clock. For those in Jesse May's, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you, Lori Roll Call. Thank you. Mayor Lenahan here, Counselor
Here.
Counselor Kendall.
Mayor.
Counselor Payton here, Counselor Sheldon.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Counselor Martinez is excused this evening. All right, thank you Lori. All right, tonight we have a little bit of a heavy agenda this evening, but for item number five on our agenda, it is consent agenda. We have four items, the approval of note number seven, regular session agenda, B, the OLCC liquor license approval for North Plains Petroleum doing business as US Market 550, C, the OLCC liquor license approval for La Loteria Taco Shop LLC, and D, the approval of the October 17, 2022 City Council minutes. Are there, before I ask another question, are there any comments or questions or additions to the October 17 City Council minutes that we need to be aware of?
I'd like to make one. I wasn't here last time.
If I don't have your mark, I'll change, I'll adjust them. I'll correct that. Any other corrections?
I have just one small correction on the minutes. Item number seven, B. There's a sentence says the owners of the golf course on several other courses in the United States, and they will most likely hold next year's events, next year's LID event, and it should be L I V, super minor.
Thank you.
And Ricky, I do have you excused down under Roll Call. Since Counselor Ricky Smith and Cameron Martinez are excused under number four.
I saw my name up there.
Well, that's just council members up above.
Okay.
It's, yeah, Roll Call is always number four.
Any other corrections? All right. Carrying none, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction from Counselor Payton.
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda in minutes. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Sheldon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Carrying then, motion carried. Before we go on to public comment, though, I, because we have a couple of new folks in town, and I'm wondering if you could take maybe one or two minutes just to introduce yourself and to the city, to the council here. The first one would be the North Plains Petroleum doing business as US Market 550. It's hoops on for that organization, that company.
La Sidu.
Oh, hello there, hi. Would you like to take a minute or two just to introduce yourself and so the council could say hello to you?
Sure. My name is La Sidu, I'm from Salem, Oregon. And we are purchasing the North Plains store. Sunshine Market. And now we will call US Market 550.
All right, well, welcome to North Plains, and we look forward to meeting you one day face to face. And are you on site? So if we did come into the market, we would be able to meet you face to face?
No, we will, we will not be on site all given times, but we will for sure have management teams and everybody else, they'll be there. But whenever you guys do come, just give us a heads up before, and then we would love to meet you guys there.
Hey, that sounds wonderful. All right, thank you very much.
You will.
All right, and then I believe we have Christian and Alma from La Loteria. I know I've had the pleasure of meeting you, and maybe some of us have, by coming into your shop. Would you like to introduce yourself and, yeah?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and councils and mayor. My name is Alma Hernandez, and my husband is
Cristian Lara.
And we both are owner of La Loteria Taco Shop. And we live in Hillsborough. And we started our business in Hillsborough at the farmer's markets. And we are part of the Adelante Mujeres small business kind of creation. And we found a nice spot in North Plains. And we have a couple of friends that also live in North Plains, so that suggested for us to open our business there, and that's what we're doing, and we would love to have you guys in. My sister Alexa is who usually is at the front greeting customers. And we would like to offer a complimentary meal to you guys, for you guys to try our food. This project started as a, well, Christian has worked in the food industry forever. He worked at the Marriott Hotel for 18 years.
No, yes.
For 18, and he went to Nike.
Nike and senior centers.
And, yeah, and a couple senior centers, but just recently at the Nike. Meet Mia Homsinger?
Yes, Mia Homsinger.
Yeah, so that's where he began kind of his journey of starting his own business. And chefs there really encouraged him to start his own, his own business in, in the food industry. And we just went for it. So thank you very much for this time, and we hope to see you guys around. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome to you and your family as well. We certainly hope that you, you are successful, and you also find our community welcoming and our staff helpful and professional. And if you ever need anything, you know where to find us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number six is public comment. This is the time that we invite the public to come forward and share their comments or thoughts about something that might not be on the agenda. And Lori, at this time, do we have any, anyone that wishing to speak? I didn't receive anything prior to tonight's meeting. So anyone on the Zoom call that wishes to make a public comment? All right, let the record show there's no audience members here at Jesse May's either, so we'll move on. All right, in our packet, we have four public hearings to go through and process, and four ordinances. So Lori, I'm going to turn this over to you. I know that you do have a script that you need to read before each one. She will have to read the script before each one, so it's going to be a little long, so bear with us. Okay, the first one is the North Plains City Council will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing on ordinance number 484, the Economic Opportunity Analysis Amendment. Your order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, experting contact, or personal bias. The mayor will request the staff report. The counselors may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject applications will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed land use permit, on the proposed Economic Opportunity Analysis Amendment, where the proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The mayor will call for comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. If the mayor closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the city council. The decision will then be entered into a final findings of fact order, which will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties to the proceedings. Appeals of the decision must be received by the city recorder within 15 days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact for whether city or state gives land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue, includes appeal to the city council or land use board, or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to a condition of approval. All right, thank you Lori. Before I open up the public hearing, I just wanted to let anyone on the Zoom call know that if you feel like you want to drop off, that's totally fine. You're also very much welcome to listen in to the rest of the meeting as well. I just wanted to give you that option. All right, so at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:12. Ordinance number 484, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, first reading. So Steve, or you've got this one?
I got this one.
All right, great.
I'm glad to know, I've got great support around me today, and I got my predecessor on the call here. So I think we got just covered. But I'm going to do my best to make sure I can navigate these waters by myself today. So good evening, mayor and counselors. A lot of these items that we're bringing to you today are items you've worked on in the past. As you know, back in June, you passed an ordinance adopting the Economic Opportunities Analysis, and that was appealed by Luba and state, and gave us an opportunity to go back and address some of their concerns of the Economic Opportunities Analysis. And so that's where we're at today. And so right now, in your packet, you receive some information showing the proposed text amendments and language struck out in red for the stuff that was being removed from the previous Economic Opportunities Analysis. And then the new text that's being proposed was inserted with the blue double underline. So I'm hoping you all saw that. It's a lot to go through, so I'm kind of, you know, keeping it a high level unless you want us to dive into some of that detail tonight. We have all that information here. So at this time, we are asking the city council to conduct a public hearing on the amendments to the EOA. And as part of that, we're going to ask you to do a first reading of the ordinance. And with that, you have the opportunity to approve the amended EOA. You could approve it with conditions, or you could deny it. And so you, you have some options on the table tonight to consider. We, just to give you a little bit more background, we have been in touch with DLCD. They did attend the planning commission meeting and provided a little testimony at that time. We also met with them on Friday and spoke with them a little bit more about their concerns. And it's our understanding that we have addressed their primary concerns at this time, and we don't anticipate them appealing the amended EOA. So I'll leave it there. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer any that I can. If I can, I have Bill with me, and Heather is also on the meeting tonight as well. So I think we got you covered to answer any questions you might have that I might not have been present in the beginning.
You know, it's been a while since we've done a quasi judicial, and I guess I do need to ask if there's any expertise contact that we do need to be aware of. And I'm wondering, Lori, if you could maybe just give an example of what that might be? Or maybe Andy?
Mayor, excuse me. This one is legislative. Hi, good to see everyone. And I just wanted to throw out there that this is legislative. So this is a part of your comp plan. This will be your EOA, your, it'll be part of the comp plan, so it is considered legislative. Everything before you tonight is legislative, so you won't have to, to do the bias the next part to.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you very much, all right.
Thank you, Heather. Just so you know why that is, is because we've initiated all of these amendments. So the city is, the applicant is actually the legislator.
Okay.
Hey, I have a question. This is, this is also to do with North Plains US Market 550. I'm sorry, this is off.
I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is off topic, but I hadn't, I heard that you mentioned that if you're on the Zoom, you can jump off. But we were told that for the liquor license, we were supposed to stay on. So would you like for us to stay on, or would you like for us to jump off?
I don't think that they have to, no, I don't believe that you have to stay on.
Yeah, they were approved under the consent agenda, so they can.
Okay, so everybody.
So you were approved under the consent agenda.
Perfect.
So you're good.
Okay, thank you so much, sorry about that, guys.
No, no worries, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your.
Have a good night.
You as well.
All right. Comments, now we need to go back to just comments from, are there any comments from the public online, or any comments that might have been submitted, either opposing or whatnot?
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. In addition to having the public comment from DLCD at the last planning commission meeting, we also received a letter from Thousand Friends that was in the record, that's part of your packet. We also received, in addition to the public comment from DLCD, we received a letter from DLCD during the planning commission hearing process. That's all the public comment we received. Since the planning commission hearing, there's been no additional public comments entered into the record.
And I'd say, since Bill's here, this is one of his flavors of love. It may be worth going over the two main amendments that we feel that we addressed that were resolved. Concerns and work through the joint with them. That were resolved completely in our minds, in our minds. Yeah, so the big issue, really, that there were a few different things that DLCD had questions or concerns about. The major thing that we wrapped up addressing was they had concerns about how much employment growth North Plains forecasted over the 20-year period. And we put together a whole new appendix and added some other information analysis to tie our land need directly to, a little bit more directly to the forecast. And we added a new appendix, appendix D, I believe it is now. And that provides some additional evidence of why North Plains can reasonably expect its employment growth to be as we forecasted over the 20-year period. And without going into the weeds on that, that was, rounding that out was kind of one of the big concerns they had, because goal line, EOA work, you start with, you typically start with an employment forecast, and then you back in your support for it. And they wanted that pulled out, and that's what we did. And so most of the amendments edits that are before you reflect that additional evidence and information to support the forecast that is in the report. And then the coordination. Oh, yeah, thank you, Andy. The other one was they wanted to see a bit more substantiation of the coordination that we have been doing with different partners, particularly the city of Hillsborough. So we made that a bit more evident and have continued to have meetings with the city of Hillsborough on different issues, because they're going through this very process on their own. And their planning commission heard their new EOA on the very night our planning commission heard our amended EOA. So we've been, we've been having meetings to coordinate on a number of different things about that. And DLCD wanted to hear about that, and so now they have to.
Any comments from city council or questions or findings?
First, I've been through the document in its entirety. I think it's pretty comprehensive. I think it does address those issues that were not only addressed by DLCD, but also the Thousand Friends of California, or Ooms, Oregon. And so, you know, and I'm a little facetious, because this is quite a dance. I'm getting tired of this state miring us in, in, you know, we want to save the blades of grass. I understand that, but I think we've done a fantastic job of addressing where we want to go and why we want to go there. And frankly, you know, Luba, I don't have a whole lot of respect for Luba either. It's just, it's, it's concerning to me. But I think in at least every word that I read in addressing what their concerns were, we've done that job. And I'm willing to go to bat, you know, frankly, ridiculous, we're at ridiculous, far as I'm concerned. So I think this does it. I don't think there's any further steps we need to go, we're just going to repeat, repeat. To me, we're there. And we're stating the best case scenario that I can think of. And I know there were even comments about, you know, you don't really have enough people for the property. So we want to make sure that you employ more than 2.5 people for every acre. Well, let's be real. They're just, it's, to me, it's a game. And unfortunately, we don't play it, but I think it's been well done. And so I commend you with the aspect of taking the steps to address the concerns. And so I think it's pretty damn complete in my mind.
Any other counselor?
I, I dislike the, I'm confused, I should say, I do not like how our city is being managed by somebody else. No, that's, it's fine, this is who they are, so we're doing it.
I think that you all have done a phenomenal job working with our neighbors to the south, the county, the state. You know, I've read it in its entirety as well. I know that I've been in on meetings or just, you know, and so on and so forth, that I really feel like we've done the right thing, you know, it's our time, and we have every right in the world to be able to say how we want to grow. And, and, and I don't think that we're being selfish at all. I think we're being very smart, very mindful. And I just really think that, I think that staff needs to definitely be, huge kudos. You guys have really gone out on a limb and really made this rock solid. So I am very proud of you. I'm very proud of all the work that you all have done for our city and, yeah.
Good. Thanks, Bill.
I know.
Thank you, we, we promised it would be both approved moving forward, and we're, we're pretty much here.
Yeah.
We'll work, we'll continue to work forward. We have a UTP amendment process with DLCD, this is just the EOA. But we're taking no chances regarding. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is an important comment. You know, this is one step in a bigger process, but it's going to be a big step to help us move forward. So it's really great work that Bill has done in our legal council, and I'm really proud of what they've done and happy to be a part of this team. So I know this is my very first one, but you know, this is really a great document, and I think it's going to help us get through the rest of the process.
All right, before I close the public hearing, any last comments or questions? Anyone from Zoom? Yeah. I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing any public comment. I don't see anything in the chat. All right, so at this time, I'll go ahead and close our public hearing at 7:26. All right, and so now our next step is to make a recommendation, there is a recommendation.
To make a motion, yeah.
And a sample motion in our packet.
I moved to approve city file number, oh, wait a minute, that's not the right one. A little far ahead. City file number 22096, amended Economic Opportunities Analysis Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment.
With a motion on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Sheldon, seconded by Counselor Page. Any discussion? Carrying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Carrying none, motion carried. All right, now I want to ask for a motion to conduct the first reading of ordinance 484 by title only.
I moved to get at the first reading of ordinance 44 by title only.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Page, seconded by Counselor Kendall.
Any discussion? Carrying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Carrying none, motion carried. Ordinance number 484 is an ordinance of the city council, city council of the city of North Plains, Oregon, implementing an amendment to the Economic Opportunities Analysis and Comprehensive Plan Text. Now may I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 484?
I moved to approve the first reading of ordinance, ordinance 484.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Payton. Any discussion? Carrying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Carrying none, motion carried. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have ordinance number 485, it's the Marijuana Code Update Ordinance, first reading. Lori? Thank you, mayor. The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding ordinance number 485, the Marijuana Code update. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The council may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed Marijuana Code update. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific date and time. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full correct mailing address, or prefer their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed Marijuana Code update. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to
Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing, an opportunity to respond to that issue, preclude the appeal to the Oregon land use order of appeals.
Thank you, Lori. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:30. All right. Steve?
Get this pulled up here real quick. Because this originally started as one file for both the marijuana and the psilocybin issues, but we need to do the ordinances separately. We have one PowerPoint presentation for both, so I'll just kind of walk through the marijuana one and then we'll recycle it and come back for the psilocybin and just kind of the way we have to do it. So, but again, this is stuff that you folks are familiar with. And so right now we have a recommendation from the planning commission for the adoption of a text amendment and code update to recognize marijuana dispensaries and manufacturing marijuana into various products. And so on October 12th, the planning commission had a hearing. There was nobody there that provided any public comment. Well, I take that back. We did receive one written letter and addressed both of these issues. They were not fans of, they didn't want it essentially in the city. But they also attended the hearing, but did not provide any comment. So all we got was the letter from those folks. But again, the planning commission held that hearing and they made the recommendation to approve it as proposed on October 12th. We put together a packet for you from that recommendation. It includes the updates, a map showing where these areas could be located in the city and, and where the uses would be permitted. At this time, the council is being asked to, to conduct a public hearing on that and to approve the update. There's one recommendation and again, contract and approve the first reading of the ordinance. This map shows you where these uses will be allowed. So for marijuana, which is what we're talking about right now, in terms of a dispensary, the dispensaries would be allowed in the C2 zone. For us, this is primarily going to be Glencoe Road. And you cannot have two such uses within 1,000 feet of each other. As you probably know, that's about the distance of the Glencoe Road strip between commercial and the Chevron gas station. So if somebody were to locate kind of in the middle of that area, they would essentially be the only business like that that would be able to locate into the city. As we also have additional buffers for schools and parks. And so when you start putting all those different buffers together and separation is very limited in terms of where they can locate. Next slide. Excuse me, I take, I, I forgot. And so in terms of manufacturer, the manufacturing uses would be allowed in the M2 zone. And so again, it's a, it's a very narrow section of the city where those type of uses would be allowed. And the land in those areas right now are rapidly being consumed with different developments. So I, I don't know if we'll ever get one of those in the near term, but maybe in the future when we expand the UGB, there might be additional opportunities at that. We might have to go back and revisit this a little bit, just make sure that with the UGB expansion, we're being consistent with the rules that we're looking at today. So, but as it sits today, the manufacturing would be in the M2 and the retail would be in the C2. Part of the updates that we've had to do, we've had to amend some definitions. We've added these uses as conditional uses in the zoning districts that we just mentioned. We've updated the zoning use tables to reflect that. And so again, for the marijuana use, it was updating the C2 for the dispensary type uses and then updating M2 for the manufacturing practices. These are the definitions that we'll go over for the next ordinance. This is.
Let's get back.
Yeah, let's get back here. Yeah, well, yeah, again, sorry. The marijuana business and the psilocybin, they're, they're kind of piggyback here, if you will. And so we've, we've kind of added the psilocybin to the marijuana definition, but that is the definition for marijuana as well. And so again, the zoning use tables, we updated to clarify where those marijuana uses could be allowed and that there would be conditional uses in those zones. So I'm sure you're familiar with the additional uses. It doesn't mean it's outright permitted. It means that they would have to come in and we could attach some specific conditions to the use to make sure it operates as we would like it to operate. So you get a little bit more of a critique on a conditional use anywhere outright permitted. Again, this is just going over the C2, kind of letting you know that it is a conditional use and it would be for the marijuana dispensary type uses. And then, and then M2, just again, clarifying that it's marijuana in the M2 as a manufacturing practice. This is the letter that we received from the public regarding these uses. And so they kind of broke it out. You may have seen that in your, your packet. They were not only addressing the marijuana and the psilocybin uses, they also had some comments on the short-term rentals. So this is how they submitted their testimony. So that kind of brings us to a close here. Right now, we are proposing that the city council conduct a hearing, approve the updates for the first reading of ordinance 485 for marijuana uses. And similar to the previous one, you can approve, you can agree with conditions or deny the text amendments. And as I noted, we are recommending that the council approve city file number 22-115 for the marijuana uses.
Is there any comment, any public comment online or via email after the fact, after the publication of the packet that you're aware of?
No, only, only the testimony that we received at the planning commission levels is what we received.
Okay. And let the record show that there are no members of the audience, Jesse Mays, for public comment. And once again, online, anyone on Zoom, wish to provide public testimony? Right, hearing none, city counselors, comments?
I remember, I think it was like six years ago, when this first came onto the city, over the planning commission, we had several meetings about this to, to listen to. Asked about being in the world, could we stop at 10 o'clock and continue on? This was a highly contested ordinance that the, that the commission made. And a lot of flowers went into it. So we got this now, they did some changes that were a little more, less, or a little less restrictive. And I'm fine with it. I know that's, and another commission put a lot of thought, a lot of work into this. And this time was a little smoother than it was last time. But this was a huge left and I want to thank the planning commission for actually spending time and thoughtfulness in doing this.
And I think, I wonder if it was about six years ago, it seemed like it was such a new thing, right? And there was a lot of uncertainty.
Yeah, everybody was scared, every, the Oregon approved it and everybody's excited for it. Yeah, we're gonna prove this, but now in my backyard. So the meetings were actually quite full of people. And what a difference six years makes, living in the room, there's nobody here, you know, with the, with the sort of opinions. Things are, I'm sure they're there, but people are not showing up for it. So still, I always want to thank the by commission for the care and the thoughtfulness of this planning network. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilor Page and then Councilor Kendall?
I would be curious to know what other jurisdictions do for the zoning within 70 feet of a residentially zone property. And the reason why I'm thinking about that is the work-life balance that we are really striving to create in the community. And I'm specifically thinking about the neighborhood located behind G4 archery. And back when James was on the planning commission, this was a potential that a marijuana facility would go in there. And that literally is in someone's backyard. That's what they wake up to every day and it's what their kids wake up to every day. And I would personally feel comfortable with a 500-foot buffer around residential because it's the same thing as a public park. We're still, we're still inflicting that on families, on our community, and not to mention property values. So I'd just be curious to know why it's only 100 feet for residential versus public park?
Yeah, I'll give you what I know and I might have to defer to Heather for a little bit more since she helped with a lot of this. But Commissioner, Councilor Page is right, there was a lot of heavy lifting that, you know, went into getting this to you folks tonight. A lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, back and forth on buffers and things of that nature. And it's my understanding that in the commercial zone, when we started applying all the buffers and then you look at the setbacks and some of the other onset requirements for a use in that area, the buffers essentially were squeezing them out. You know, when you overlay all the other requirements, the available area to put the use on the property would be to a point where it wouldn't even be possible. And so I know that some of those got pulled back a little bit. So you could actually have the opportunity to provide the use on the property. I mean, you know, we, we had an option, right? We could have just said no, but we decided to go with allowing the uses in certain areas. And so since we made that choice of allowing in a certain areas, we didn't want to overlay a bunch of additional requirements that would essentially make it not possible. So I think if you're going to allow it, then it's coming down to how it fits into that particular zone and the surrounding neighborhoods. And the buffers was the idea that would help make that fit in a little bit better, kind of like a conditional use when you put in your conditions to make it a little bit more compatible with the surrounding uses that it's going to come in with. And so I think that's why you are seeing what you're seeing. But I'll, I'll let Heather add any more to that. But that was my understanding that the buffers were starting to preclude the overall intention of allowing.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I, I actually would add to that, that the 100-foot buffer to residential is not changing. So that's currently what we have in our code. It was the setbacks to the front that were changed because once you applied the 100-foot buffer to the residential and then a larger setback, I, I think it was 50 feet or something from the roadway. So from Glencoe, then you made the property unusable because most properties are not over 150 feet deep or certainly not enough that you could put a building in there. So that 100-foot buffer from residential zoning is very standard in other jurisdictions. And it is exactly what we have currently in our code.
Yeah, I remember, I remember we were resting with this. We didn't want to get to the point where we're getting too cute with the footage to, you know, the buffers to register it out. And it was not possible to do it. Why, it's possible, but you can't, you know? So we had to make it legally possible. So that was the 100-foot. That's for that. We get, so you can't, you know, possibly have a place the size saved that you can't. Oh, yes, they go do it, but practically you can't. So that was the, we just probably.
If I may add also, the other thing to keep in mind is there are the setbacks required and landscaping and screening. And then the conditional use permit allows the planning commission to add additional standards in that way as well. So I, I think that it is the intent of the planning commission that, you know, of course, the residential uses that are adjacent or nearby would be top priority for considering those additional conditions when looking at a conditional use permit, which all of these would come in under.
That's all, thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, so this, what we're voting on, is there an outright use in those, in the C2 and the M1?
No, it would be, it would be a conditional use.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so as Heather was saying, you know, in addition to the required setbacks that you have and the, and other things, it is a conditional use. So if something were to come in and, and come before you, you know, you would have the opportunity to listen to the neighbor's concerns and potentially add some conditions to the approval, the best way you can, to help address those concerns. So you, maybe it's hours of operation, maybe some additional buffering, fencing, or something that, you know, could address their concerns. I think, you know, the, the important thing to know between the, the manufacturing and the retail side is, you know, one of the big concerns when it comes to the manufacturing is, is the odor. I've not seen that, just driving around through various jurisdictions that have these facilities, that, that there's an odor that comes from them. So I think it's more foot traffic, maybe the type of people they could attract, things of that nature that could be an attention concern. Or for a commercial type of a use versus a manufacturing. But that's what the manufacturing over at the industrial, the hope, you know, given by more like uses that also generate noise and dust and things of that nature. So it's more accountable. But they're both conditional uses in any of their zones.
Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. One other thing to note is the state currently has a moratorium on any new marijuana licenses to LLC for the retail dispensaries. The only way you would be able, be able to cite a retail business, this is, this is a license transfer. So they're not allowing any new ones. They are fortifying until 2024, I think that market is saturated over these last five, six years. But it's another thing, if anything were to move to North Plains, it would have to be a license transfer. Not saying that couldn't happen, but it's, it's one more thing to, to consider. So the, the market may be slowing down a little bit, that's sort of the indication.
Thank you for that. That's a good, that's an important part. So it only looks at this type of, the moratorium that could come into the city are existing businesses that currently have a license on, somebody would definitely do starting out.
Did you think that? I would, I stopped into that one on the baseline, about 4th Street, TDB America. I walked in there and I'm probably not want to buy gummies, you know, for sleeping. But there's a wall. And they also said they were manufacturing on the next door, but I couldn't tell. It was like a, just a retail store. And he said there are actually less places now than there was five or six years ago. A lot of them went out of business, so it's it. So I don't know. Maybe it's conglomerate, I don't know. But, but that's a, maybe a positive thing to some extent, but very clean and, you know, no cash. You can push a credit card in there. You know, just like any of the.
It's saturated.
Yeah. So just interesting.
Here we are.
Yeah, there we are. All right. Any other comments or questions before I close the public hearing? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:48. All right, so we have, we have three motions. The first I would be asking is to, a sample of, a motion to approve the city file number 22115, zoning and development code text.
I move to approve city file number 22-115, zoning and development code text.
Like you just make one comment to that? And you can just make it specific to the marijuana, since this, that file contains both.
So we're gonna do. You do the statistics?
Oh, just to make it specific to the marijuana use.
Oh, that might be wrong.
Yes, just like, just like, yeah, exactly, because you have it on the screen.
Right here.
So let me get this straight. We have to do it 2215 for marijuana and also for psilocybin? Psilocybin, sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it separately.
Okay, don't be out of it.
Sure.
I move to approve city file number 22-115, zoning and development code text amendment with relation to marijuana and zoning code text amendments.
Yeah, my only comment was just that, you know, for the file number 2215, that we're just doing the marijuana now.
Yeah.
And then we're back and reference that file number. Yeah, and it'll be psilocybin.
Yeah. Is it okay?
Yeah.
All right. Am I ready? So.
All right.
I'll check it.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilor Kendall, seconded by Councilor Sheldon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Now may I have a motion to give that? Now, may I have a motion to give back the first reading of ordinance number 480, 485 marijuana uses by title only?
I'll move to conduct the first reading of ordinance 485. Marijuana users by title.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilor Sheldon, seconded by Councilor Payton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Ordinance number 485 is an ordinance of the City Council in the City of North Plains, Oregon. Implementing an amendment to text of the zoning and development code of parties' marijuana land use regulations.
I move to. Approve the first. Reading of. Ordinance 45.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the top table by Councilor Smith, seconded by Councilor. Page. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Next up then would be the. Ordinance number 48. Six.
Yes, so thank you, ma'am. We're gonna roll back through what we just.
Oh, yes.
That's right.
The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding ordinance number 486 psilocybin code update. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The council may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed psilocybin code update. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding. And must provide their name and full correct mailing address or preferred their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code of zoning development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon and make them see. Those criteria and findings in fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact. Or to the city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to proposed psilocybin code update. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing and opportunity to respond to that issue. Proclute appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Thank you, Lori. All right, this time I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:53. Stephen.
Yes, thank you. So again, this is coming to us as a result of voter approval of a ballot measure to allow psilocybin use. And so we are responding to that. And it just was brought to my attention that is a timely matter too, because the state has asked us to. You know, respond to the voters by having this adopted this year. So. We're on track. So it's a. Request that we have brought before the planning commission back on October 12th. We had meetings with them. Again, the only public testimony that was provided was the letter that you saw in the previous presentation there. Again, they were present at that meeting via Zoom, but they did not try to provide any comment when the public was allowed to speak. So. Again, kind of going through the locations is very similar to what we did with the marijuana. It's actually identical. So again, the way these uses operate are kind of like a holistic type of a hearing. Facility. So in the commercial zone, you would have that type of. Kind of a. Office setting with professionals who would be administering. The use of the psilocybin. So the person who would be using it would be supervised in these facilities. But it's not going to be like a dispensary where you can go in and purchase the product. It's going to be only administered by a licensed professional to the patient. With their professional guidance while they're. Under the effects of this psilocybin. So a little bit different, but we have cited them the same in terms of. Where the kind of commercial use can go and where the manufacturing can go. So as far as the. The office type of the use, that's going to be in the C two zone primarily along. Glencoe, and we're going to have the same spacing distance. So again, in theory, say. A. Marijuana shop came into the south end, the only other thing you could probably get would be the psilocybin at the north. Or another marijuana at the north. That would give you 1,000 feet, but any one of those located in the middle would preclude the opportunity for another one of those to come in. And so it is a very constrained area where we're going to allow the commercial activity. Going to the manufacturing, that would move over to the industrial lands and. Giving the opportunity to to make any of the products that would essentially be used at these offices. So. If they need to grow the mushrooms or the psilocybin or extracted and create some type of additional product, that would only be allowed in the industrial zones. Not having any experience with this, I don't know what type of products they will make from them, but it's quite obvious that whatever they do make has to end up at these. Facilities under a professional's control. So a little bit different. We did get a phone call last week or an email from somebody who was interested in psilocybin. They wanted to do manufacturing over at the old chiropractic office there on Glencoe. We shared with them what I just shared with you, where those different uses had to go. He said, thank you. It looks like, you know, this won't work for me. I wanted to manufacturing. But again, you can see that people are paying attention. They realize that these rules have to come into play, and so they're starting to seek out jurisdictions and find out where they can go. In terms of the amendments that we're doing, we're doing the same type of amendments that we did with the marijuana. We're updating our definition sections. To provide definitions on psilocybin and manufacturing and commercial, what all that means. So people understand what we're going to allow. We're going to allow these as conditional uses in both zones. So again, it's not about white permitted use, it's a conditional use. We updated the zoning use tables and both the C two and the F two zone to reflect that, to show that it was a conditional use. And then, you know, again, those zoning cables were the C two and the F two districts that had those updates to them. These are the definitions that were added to the code to address psilocybin. So we defined what psilocybin is, what the manufacturing and processing would be. What is psilocybin premises, what psilocybin products are, and what is psilocybin service center would be. So those are all the new definitions that would come into the code with the. Again, this is kind of reiterating what we just talked about, having the buffers in place for parks and schools. Adding our updated definitions. And. Hours of operation. That's one thing that is a little bit different. The hours of operation for the psilocybin centers will be a little bit different than the operation hours for the marijuana uses. So. Seven to seven for the psilocybin, and then you can see 10 to eight and 10 to 10 for marijuana uses. So that would be primarily the commercials. Not. And correct me if I'm wrong, Andy or Heather, but I don't believe those hours of operations extend to the manufacturing part of this. It's just a commercial.
Well, I was going to get Heather's thoughts or clarification on there with the psilocybin. I know those hours were chosen because they kind of reflect the medical industry or therapeutic industry a little bit more.
Right.
Is it stipulated Monday through Friday or would that? You know, because marijuana is, we actually have days stipulated there. We.
Let me just dive into the code language really quickly while you keep moving forward, and I will clarify that question because I cannot remember off the top of my head. Let me take a look.
Yeah, yeah. And so again, this was the definition that we had for marijuana businesses. We added psilocybin to that definition. As they are similar. And so we also removed the Jesse Mays Community Center from that 1,000 foot area. Again, just kind of pinch these a little bit. So I think we're kind of focused more on. The schools and, you know, offering them. Yeah, okay. So again, to the zoning use table, we did add the psilocybin uses. And then we updated the C two to reflect that, to add the psilocybin uses as a conditional use. And same thing with the M two zone, we updated that zoning table to add psilocybin uses of the conditional use. And then this was the comments that we received, the eight. Only one. So. Much feedback right now. And before I go through this, maybe I'll jump back to Heather real quick, just so she can provide us with my questions.
Thank you. Yep, the code language as proposed does not specify Monday through Friday, so it would be any day of the week, 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. We did base that on some other examples in other jurisdictions in the state, but you could certainly adjust that if you'd like to see that limited. I would say that, you know, it's not uncommon for a therapist's office or a doctor's office or. Any other kind of holistic offices to have Saturday hours or maybe even Sunday hours. But it's definitely up to you if you'd like to add days of the week to that.
Yeah, so that might be one thing you want to discuss today for psilocybin uses. It's maybe going back to the slide that shows the hours of operations for marijuana and deciding if that's. What you might want to do for psilocybin or keep it as it's. So that's our presentation. And at this point, the city council is considering a recommendation from the planning commission. To amend the code to allow for the psilocybin uses as proposed. The council being asked to conduct the public hearing, approve the updates and approve the first reading of the ordinance. Oh, 486 psilocybin and. Apparently with your options here, you can approve, deny, or approve the conditions. And we recommend approval of city file number 22115 for psilocybin.
And so I'm just going to ask for public comment on the Zoom call. Anything? Current, meantime, gotten any feedback? Also, let me make sure that there are new members of the public in Jesse Mays to provide a public comment. And now turn this over to City Council, Councilor Page.
So this is not mutually exclusive. You could have marijuana and also psilocybin for the same. Just as I mentioned earlier, on the north end and in the south end, it can be next to each other.
Well, you, you could have a marijuana use and you could have a psilocybin use. And they can be within 1,000 feet, but you can't have two of the same uses within 1,000.
I, I don't agree with that because you said one over here, one over there, but it can be in the middle and they can be.
Right, right. I was just trying to give you a spacing. You know, you have to get almost to the other end to have the opportunity, but if you locate in the middle and you're a psilocybin user, it would essentially preclude probably another psilocybin that's coming in along the way. Because you don't have the spacing. And same for marijuana.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
As I mentioned, the, the, the mean trees. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
The only other question I have is I don't, I don't think there's any reason to mess with the hours that could be part of the conditional use permit, I presume. I'm sorry. You're saying hours operations would be a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, we would want to make that clear, even though it's going to be in the code, that would be a nice thing to carry over as a condition, just so it's clear. So that is not uncommon in land use to just kind of reiterate ourselves sometimes as we do, you know. Just for clarity. Thank you.
Yeah, we just talked about marijuana being, but go through the process six years. And the state not approving any new uses. Well, this is going to be brand new. And the chance of this happening. Is going to be. Probably a better way to go for.
I don't have an opinion if you're.
I'm just saying, it would be more aptitude that they could come here more than they could the marijuana.
Well, I mean, I think we're going to find out, right? It could be, it could be a similar thing in terms of when the marijuana first passed, right?
Right.
It went crazy. We had all these dispensaries that was going crazy. The city like, whoa, wait a minute, we got to pump the brakes a little bit on this. I don't know if it's going to go that crazy, but I imagine it's going to be a lot of phone calls coming into us, asking us, you know, do we have a code to address that? How does it work? You know, those type of questions, you know, a lot of times they ask what your thoughts are. How does the city council feel about these? You know, is it going to be a uphill battle for me? You know, what am I facing if I come into your jurisdiction? So. You know, it, it's a guess right now as to how it's going to play out, but I would imagine there'll be a lot of entrepreneurs that we're going to, you know, take advantage of this new opportunity. So I think in the beginning it'll be a little bit. Like, whoa, hold on, here we go.
Like the wild west. I'm kind of afraid of what's going to happen. But, but this one's. And I know that it was approved, but I don't care. I'm against it.
If I may just jump in also, the way that a business would start in this type of use is go to the state first and get the. Permit to be able to operate this type of business, and they would have to prove that they've gone through the appropriate licensing. To be able to administer these type of services. So, you know, the city is regulating where and when it can happen. But the state's in charge of making sure that people who are doing it are doing it safely and appropriately and per the law. So. You know, it's just up to the city to say where it can happen, but it's up to the state to say how it's being done appropriately.
I'm impressed with Steve.
I appreciate that, Heather. And so, you know, as part of the application process, those would be things that we would ask for, you know, either upfront that you have all that approval or before you get open as a conditional approval that you provide us with that state authorization. In order to go forward. So that was very similar to the dispensaries. They had to go through the state. Get approved, and then they can go out and go find a place to do business. And so. There are some additional layers there for them to go through.
And remind us, the condition of, condition of approval. Is that something that is, is it administrative or would it have to come back to the planning commission to review before moving forward?
This would go to the planning commission. So it would be where we would make a staff report with a recommendation, and then they would conduct the hearing and then make a, they would be the decision maker, the ultimate decision maker. And then any appeals would come to you.
One question. Would Steve, so or maybe Heather, the state requirements lots more strict than what we're doing here by far, do you know?
Are you saying would the state be more restricted?
I did, I did more. Restricted than they are than what we're proposing.
Well, again, that, there's kind of two different things. The state's not regulating where they go.
Yeah.
They're just making sure that they meet all the state requirements in terms of how they operate. That they're professional, that they have whatever certifications they need to be able to provide that type of service. So the state's going to check that level, but they're not going to regulate. The local level in terms of where they go and then how they operate.
So we didn't say we're worried about that kind of stuff. Yeah, that's right.
It's very similar to marijuana.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:08. We, so just to reminder, when you, if you are the person that is going to make the motion. Just make sure that you add, you know, regarding psilocybin into this file number 22115.
Are you ready? I move to approve city file number 22 dash 115 zoning and development code text limit for psilocybin.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilor Page, seconded by Councilor Sheldon. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The ayes have it. Do you need to, Lori, do I need to go through? You do not. Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, so the next motion up then would be to conduct the first reading of ordinance 486.
I move to conduct the first reading of ordinance four eighty six for seven uses by Tyler.
Call second.
All right, we have a first by Council Page, second by Council Sheldon, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, thank you. The ayes moved it forward. And the ordinance number four eight six is an ordinance of the city council, city council, the city of North Plains, Oregon, implementing an amendment to text of the zoning and development code regarding psilocybin land use regulations. And I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four eight six.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance four eight six. Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Council Sheldon, second by Council Kendall, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, thank you. One more public hearing.
The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding ordinance number four eight seven, short term rental code update. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The city council may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed short term rental code update. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must prefer provide their name and full correct mailing address or preferred their email address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed short term rental code update. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue concludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Lori. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at eight thirteen.
Steve. Here we go, our final one of the day. I I understand that you folks are also familiar with the efforts that's gone into this code update. And I believe it was publicly brought to us by the planning commission, I understand, that they had some concerns with every and these and short term rentals and things like that. So not that that's a particularly large issue right now in North Plains, but always good to be upfront and make sure we have something. So when it does come here, you know, we're protected and then we're having it occur on our terms. And so, again, the planning commission, like you folks, had four meetings on the twelfth, and this was one of them. And we did not receive any public, well, I take that back, we did get the same person who provided comment on marijuana and psilocybin, provided some comment on the short term rentals. The comment that they had clearly addressed bed and breakfasts. I think it was a misunderstanding on their part because they saw that we were going to strike the definition of bed and breakfast from the code, but it doesn't preclude bed and breakfasts from operating. There's still work that is short term rentals, so it really was kind of a housekeeping issue since we were going to do this to just, you know, we didn't need that extra definition. So that, I think, confused the folks who provided comment on this one. With that said, again, they were at the hearing and they did hear us talk about that, that they would not go away. That was brought up at that meeting. So your package includes the recommendation, the proposed code updates and public comments. And at this time, the council is being asked to conduct the hearing, approve the update and do a first reading for ordinance four eighty seven. And what this particular code update required us to do was to go in and update the definition sections, update the design review for short term rentals, update zoning use tables for our seven and a half, our five and our two point five zones for short term rentals as well as the the C two and NC zone. So those are all the zones that were impacted by this proposed code amendment. And so those are the ones that received the updates. Again, in the definitions, we removed bed and breakfast and we had a short term rental. So again, that's something where the confusion was for the person who provided comment. And then in the design review, we added short term rental standards now. So that's going to provide a little bit more clarity on how these uses operate in the city, which will be a good thing. We'll have a little understanding of, you know, what to expect when they come in. And we again, we remove the bed and breakfast standards. And the key short term rental standards that are coming into the code are, is going to be a type two design review. You're going to have one guest per four hundred square feet of gross finished floor living that that will be permitted. Will require one practice space per guest room and food may be provided to overnight guests only. So there won't be probably a large type of the kitchen area, you know, but you will have the opportunity to provide some some meals for your guests. And then zoning use tables, again, updated to add short term rental and remove bed and breakfast. And then going to the specific zoning districts, we add in short term rentals as a permitted use in all three of the residential zones. So it is not a conditional use. This is a permitted use in the residential zones. And we remove bed and breakfast in as a conditional use from two of those, the R five and the R two point five. And then in the C two zone, again, we remove bed and breakfast in as a conditional use and are allowing hotels and motels as permitted uses, which would be a short term rental type of use. And then in the neighborhood commercial zone, we added it to the short term. I mean, we added short term rentals to the neighborhood community zone as a permitted use. Yeah, in closing, we're asking you to consider the recommendation from the planning commission to make the zoning and development code amendments. You may approve, approve with conditions or deny the the text amendment as it is before you today. And so at this time, we're asking you to conduct the public hearing, approve the updates and perform the first reading of the ordinance tonight.
All right, thanks, Steve. At this time, do we have any additional public comment online? Or real time via email? All right, let the record show too that we do not have any members of the public in Jesse Mays Community Center here this this evening as well. So at this time, I'm going to open that comments, questions up to the city council. Council Page.
Steve or Heather. I've had a little bit to fuse about the structure of rental. And if we have a bed and breakfast right in, we had to provide handicap spots for parking. How about for the short term rentals? We don't need any just for those ADA required business owners. But they needed for that.
That's a good question. The way the handicap parking works now for commercial users in particular is you have to have a certain number of parking spaces required for the use first. And once you get to the trigger points, then it starts triggering various levels of ADA parking spaces. And so typically, it's it's up to thirty spaces. Gets you your first ADA space, which is typically a van accessible space. So it'd be the parking space with the stripe space next to it. And then as you increase your parking above thirty, it starts pulling in more ADA spaces. And then the next one is just a standard without the loading area and then it kind of keeps going from there as you have requirements from our code telling you to add parking for the use. So in this particular situation.
We're not gonna have that for like the best, those are the triggers then.
I think the only way you're going to see handicap parking on short term rentals would be in the hotel motel type scenario. Or a large bed and breakfast that can trigger a certain amount of parking spaces. This does not mean that, you know, they could say we require ten parking spaces. But they want to have a ADA ramp or some type of ADA parking for their guests. It doesn't preclude them from adding it. It's just that it's not required by us or by the building codes. So they could still add that to their parking lot if if they chose to. But I don't think in terms of the triggers that we typically see, you're probably not going to see them until you see the bigger short term relatives.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at eight twenty. And we have a simple motion for ordinance. Four eighty seven.
Yeah, I'll move to approve city file number two two one one six zoning and development code amendment because it applies to short term rentals.
Let's say again.
We have the motion on the table by Council Sheldon, second by Council Page, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. We have a motion to conduct the first reading of four eighty seven.
I move to conduct the first reading of motion four eighty seven by Tyler.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, first, we have a motion by Council Page, second by Councilor Smith, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. And then finally, a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four eighty seven.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance four eight seven.
All second. All right, Councilor, first by Council Sheldon, second by Council Payman, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you so much. I'm sure I'm going to, if I wake up in the middle of the night saying those things over and over again. I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I just want to thank you too for being here tonight. I appreciate your attendance.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see everyone.
Heather, have a good night. And thank, thank you, Council, for enduring four public hearings. Really appreciate that. All right, next on our agenda is city manager report, Andy.
Okay, thanks. Well, it's mostly there. See, I guess a few things to note, Veterans Day ceremony this week on Friday, eleven a.m., city offices will be closed. Seems like the weather might actually be, I won't say anything, but they could not be not terrible, something. So that's eleven a.m. At the, I don't think it's the next meeting, but it probably is, but we'll get an update in the public works building. We've got a lot of its thematic design finalized and now it's to the the cost estimators and they're going to tell us how much the the things they cost and this value engineer if we need to. One of the things that we have discovered is just like we did with the reservoir, the soil conditions there for, so we're kind of going through the go into the options there about how, I guess, robust can we make it? If we wanted to be a critical facility, then we'd be able to do a lot of that, the same sort of mitigation with the cement, you know, columns underneath the structure. So we'll see how much cost that adds in. I will say this, though, and the comment we got from these guys and their geotech was, I I really, I did not expect to see that. But I do not expect to see soil was that bad there, you know, with the reservoir too. So next time, anyone buy some piece of property or on that side of that, I would just say, you know, do a geotech first, you know, what structure you're gonna put there. I have asked if we can get the drill logs, the geotechnical investigation of what the school did over there. Because I think what, whatever measure they took, I don't think they put a thousand columns down eight year. Reservoir. So I'm kind of hoping whatever they did, it was a slab on grade, we'll feel good doing the same thing.
But this is the question I would have is, is the school the same size as we did?
Right, that's exactly right. That's what we want to know. With us, a bit more of a critical facility because it'll be hosting really the the nerve center of the of the water system. So that's kind of a different, different standard, but three J worked on the civil there, so John's going to see if he can get the sort of scientific standards work there too. But anyway, we'll get an update on that here in a couple of weeks. The approach we're taking with that is we're going to do a CMGC contractor management. It's a call. Anyway, it's basically you bring a contractor on early on the process. It's almost like a design build, but if we're going to use certain materials like timber, cross limiting timber or something like that, you bring in a general contractor where if you're using specialized materials or these days, it takes so long to order stuff and have it show up. The sooner we can get a GC on board, the quicker we can get some things on order. So that's the approach we're going to take. We're going to interview four contractors later this month. And then after that, we'll come back council with the recommendations. We have a designing, architecture, engineering team in my cell will be. Steve, doing well so far. Doug's also about a month in, is our our rare volunteer that you have come at one of the next meetings and can you talk to you folks about what he's, what he's doing, what he's working on? And the next meeting too, actually, this is like one of the, we have staff has kind of put together based on council goals and other projects and priorities, a spending plan for the ARPA dollars, the investment plan dollars. I was thinking we could present that to you and sort of get your comments and feedback at another work session next month. Or we could wait until the first part of December to do that. I mean, I'm sorry, what I, next meeting, November seventeen, November twenty first, or we can do it at the first meeting of December. Are you okay with another work session for the next meeting?
Personally, I'd like to see that.
I think it'd be a good discussion. We have several, several projects and ideas in mind that would kind of hit hit our goals and objectives. So, okay, great.
Yes.
Scheduled.
Scheduled, okay. We'll do six P M, bouncing one hundred and thirty minutes, so.
Good to meet Luke, perhaps the next meeting?
Perhaps, perhaps TBD, TBD.
Okay.
Still going through some negotiations there, so. The elegant. Yeah. And that's sort of it. Do you have any questions, Mr. Smith, or anyone else?
I do have one.
Studying on that.
Yeah. Everybody knows Sunset Ridge in Far West. I did get a communication from them that they sent all the neighbors. If you're going to have a meeting next Wednesday. But with it being a hot subject, I'm not sure why they're doing it the way they're doing it. They're using Microsoft Teams. So you have to set that up and I'm not sure how easy that is to use.
It's easier.
So is it, yeah, you would think with a hot but subject, they would do it in person. I guess we're going to do it over. You may get more attention with teams.
Where they just, where they're proposing, just a building?
Well, I think it's, they've done one neighborhood meeting, so at this point, they don't have to do another one if they say they would.
They did one last week.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
They haven't done a second one.
I think that's what he's talking about.
This is the one I did last year ago.
So our, our emails started to light up a little bit today, so I thought they may have filmed the meeting already.
Yeah, so anyway, we, there's, what we've had to tell folks is, here are your concerns, we haven't seen an application yet, so we really can't comment because what they're proposing isn't allowed us use for that. We can't really comment on anything until we see some specifics.
Well, I was here when economic development, but a couple of them showed up. So happens during the neighborhood. And of course, when I do the walk, I get asked about it.
Yeah.
And I I tell them. And I tell them basically the same thing you're saying. But I guess they collected 450 signatures.
I heard something about a petition today. But again, I mean, our, our response is, at this time, we don't have a land dispute application. We don't have a proposal to comment on, you know. So we, you know, we've heard from them. We know they're doing some studies. I know they're talking with Washington County about, you know, what type of road improvements could be required for West Union. So they're, they're doing their due diligence right now. And the one thing that they did do is earlier in the year, they submitted a lot line adjustment to reconfigure the properties. There's three properties there that make up the site. They recently submitted a new lot line adjustment, wanting a different configuration. So they never recorded the first one. And now those, those two lots sit side by side in kind of a north-south fashion. But they want to orient them east to west now. And then what they're showing is at the bottom would be a warehouse building.
They're ringing out here.
And as a north, it would be Far West Recycling Center. So.
That's the recycling.
Have you seen it yet?
They shared with us for the lot.
Okay.
So that's, that's all we have at this time. And, you know, again, they call pretty regularly with questions on the code, you know, setback clarification buffering. We share with them that, you know, we hear from the neighbors and we share back with them the concerns that we've heard. And so I think they are trying to pull that into their plan to try and have the concerns addressed as best as they can. But I'm, I'm not thinking we're gonna get an application until, you know, up to the beginning of the year.
I know that this was brought up, what, four or five years ago, they started talking about this. Nothing's ever really happened. So.
Yeah, that was pretty punitive and then, right, so everything stopped. And then, I mean, they went so far as they had a meeting, things like that, four years ago, or three years ago. But I think, you know, as far as the virtual meeting format goes, I know speaking from the GOA when Rimmel did it, there was a ton of people online. So that, for doing a second meeting, maybe not a bad way to go.
So last meeting, we talked about, oh, we did this and that, we had meetings. I forgot to mention that to the partial rep form meeting on the 10th of October. And during that meeting, there, Bryn Hill is talking about their, about their park plan. And so the feedback was that they weren't really listening to the parks' regulations for how like the parks to be. And I brought that up, say, hey, guys, I'm just concerned that these guys, they all have time, come up to you with the, with these, with these regulations. Because like, oh, that's great. And Matt, hearing something about it, are, nothing's shown up. So they had their consultant there talking about it, and they were not aware of the regulations about the park or either. So I brought it up to them. Also, Patty Burns suggested in the middle of the park, which is a bigger park, the biggest park in one, it's already built out. And they're building a parking before, because in the middle, it's a very good size room. There's two of those smaller parks to be built, but they're tiny. She suggested a bathroom be put there. And they said, maybe you put some porta potties or something like that. No, a real actual bathroom would be nice. But it's kind of expensive, and they're kind of pushing back because, you know, the homeowners association has to pay for it. And they want to respect the owners of that eventually. So I was talking to Andy, maybe we can do something with some of the credits they have, so we could have one put in there before they build it out. So that's something I wanted to bring up, that maybe that's something we'd like to ask Andy to pursue, maybe get another bathroom that we have over here while still being built to save costs. And maybe use some of our credits we have for that to get a second bathroom. That's an actual functional bathroom on that side of the city, between those parks. So I forgot to bring that up. It's, I was thinking about something else, and I didn't bring that up. I was thinking about the Justice Center instead. So I want to put that on record that maybe it'd be a good idea to have a bathroom over there. And maybe the city could, you know, help out with that as far as cost goes.
And just out of curiosity, would the public works maintain the bathroom as well? Or is that the cost that's passed through to the HOA?
Probably passed through HOA, but the, but the construction of it would have to, of it. Any feeling about?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the, I mean, what's the park? Is it HOA park or is it a city park?
They'll be each way maintained, each way maintained. They'll be open to the public. Anyone in the public that maintains by HOA.
Because I mean, we've got that on Sunset Ridge, where you got, one's a city park and one's an HOA park.
Yeah, all of those in Bryn Hill, according to the bathroom, that'll be the same HOA maintained.
And they would have to maintain the bathroom.
Yeah, well, you know, this is part of the conversation. How, you know, how much of a partner do we want to be in this? You know, how much is the park's board want to pursue this? I told those guys, and we've already talked to Bryn Hill folks after this, shows the cost of it, and the floor of bathroom would be, you know, two, two stall. Two years ago, it should have been less than the cost of that because you're not including electrical and all those things. Now the price might be the same, you know, 130,000 or something like that. But, but we'll see. Yeah, we can do that in credits. Something like that's already covered in the development. So I, I personally think it would be, especially if it's a park, it's a bill of that type of development. It would be down the street from the mixed-use areas and you have you have shopping or whatever's there, it's a daycare, whatever it is, and kids are down in the park. It's the next closest park, having a restroom out there, probably knows that, and so. As for the maintenance, even that, if it's just part of the routine of cleaning this, and it's not a big deal, I don't know, that could just be part of the argumentation with them. But it's, you know, something the park's board is gonna go over in the next park management plan update. Size of a certain park, or it's surrounded by a certain number of houses, or it's a, you know, certain number of homes in the subdivision. Make a restroom requirement, not, not if it's a six home PUD or something like that. But if it's 50 or whatever, you know, there's gonna be a parking lot and the size and.
But I want to make it a point not to, that, that, that should settle. So I want to try to negotiate one now before you did your next.
And that shifts the ocean. Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've done, we've met with them about that.
So I have that, you know, that's just be a good opportunity to have one done as they're still building it. They said there was something built and then have them go back and redo it again. So.
We have been conversational, as you said, and they're coming back to the park for based on the comments that they got at the last meeting. So we'll see what they propose. But they've heard that comment pretty good.
Any other comments or questions, Andy? Well, just checking in, have we heard any updates from Washington County regarding the speed reduction on West Union?
No, probably. I can't remember if you asked last meeting either. It's, it's in their queue. It's in their work queue. So the wheels are in motion there. And it's probably like anything with the county, you don't expect it to go quick, but.
Absolutely, okay.
It's a process.
And then my other question was, can you provide any kind of update on the GOA property and what that's looking like?
I really can. I was just asking Steve earlier today, he's heard from the architect or the planner over there. There was a period about three weeks ago, they had several questions, kind of working on some last details that we have to look. The indication that they did give is that they wanted to submit some sort of application by the end of the year. So we're still planning on that, but I don't have anything from the last couple of weeks.
Is there a time period that we're working with?
There is. It's in the negotiating agreement. I don't remember the exact dates, but yeah, there is a time period where we're. And it might be, I think it goes to the end of this year. That's why they're trying to.
I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, they seem to be focused on trying to iron out the last few big issues for them, which is the red power lines and how that's gonna be dealt with. And then traffic. I think that's kind of, you know, they're kind of wrapping their application up based on getting those answers.
And the final question, how did the discussions go with Roll Tide Property and their search for tenants?
Good. You know, just wanted to kind of catch us up and see what sort of interest he's getting. It's just one building. So he's getting some interest, I think a couple of letters of intent from some. So it'll be kind of in beverage and restaurants, you know, field. Yeah, I probably can't say too much because I'm gonna have some, you know, margin of information there. But yeah, I mean, the building will fill up. It's just a matter of, again, I wanted to be with us to get a feel about, you know, community goals, how would that interact with what we're envisioning at the GOA, you know, would they be compatible? It's of that, but it's sort of like with, with the land use applications. We can't, we don't really dictate what's gonna happen. We could just say, you know, the community is definitely lacking restaurant options or something, you know. That'd be a good one to say. But yeah, I don't, I don't think a lot of problem to what that thinks. But it, you know, uses the first building as kind of the test market, and then they'll build the second part, second building based on kind of what sort of interest you got in success in the first tour.
Thank you.
Just see the sale pending on the rest of the business tonight.
Yeah, I saw that too today.
It did come true, what I heard. So, interesting to look at.
Yeah. Promising.
Promising, yes. Hopefully they're longer up the scene, go away.
Any progress in getting the ordinance for having commercial usage, not being able to be residential?
I'm gonna talk to the attorney about that this week. The one that wanted to address this, he was out all last week.
Now, as many of you know that, so I'm, I'm on the OMA task homelessness task force and task force on homelessness. And the 25 mayors on this committee have been, are working together with the League Oregon Cities to create kind of a one-page sort of a highlighter for each city, right? Each city is very unique as their own issues with homelessness. While we have significantly, you know, low incidence of homelessness. There are other issues that people, I think, in our community sometimes are dealing with and that might not be, you know, living on the street, but they might be living with family members and, you know, families, you know, coming together and living, you know, several families living under one roof and that sort of thing. And I know that, you know, the chief and the city, a lot of times, they refer these folks to, you know, like community action or Salvation Army, Force Growth Foundation. And one of the stipulations that if the OMA, if the OMA's task, the initiative does go to the 2023 legislative, legislative group legislature, and, you know, they award cities money, we could potentially receive $40 per resident, right? And that's a significant amount of money. And while we really don't, we don't have, you know, shelters and things like that. If a city does not, is not set up in that particular way, we can actually opt, I mean, to receive the money, but then turn around and give that money to organizations that we, like you work with. You know, for example, we could turn around and say X amount of money could go to community action or X amount of money could go to Force Growth Foundation. So something that Andy and I will need to work with the L O C on is kind of our one pager. And I'm hoping that maybe between now and, you know, the first part of December, we can get that kind of squared away and then share that with the city council. But I, you know, wanted to bring that to your attention, that we'll, we'll be doing that. Don't know what it's looking, going to look like, but the nice thing is, is that we do have the League Oregon Cities supplies a staff person, a communications specialist that will actually work with us on our specific needs and wants and desires for this one pager. So I think once we get that squared away, we'll make sure that, I mean, that'll go out probably in a, you know, email or, or to judge item, whatever, we'll talk about it and figure that out. But I wanted to just bring that to your attention to let you know that's what I'm working on at that piece. So anyhow, other than that, I don't have anything else to report. So Sheldon?
Nothing for me.
Good?
Yeah.
Do we have something for the 12:05 work session? We have a work session until 12:05, or it's like getting another one, hence the meeting. We have three work sessions in a row or?
Yeah, the reason I did that on the 21st is I have something on the 5th. I definitely.
So is it gonna swap it?
We could. Let me, let me. I don't have one with that. So we could do the 5th.
Well, you say it can be gone, right?
That's it. Yes, I'm gonna be on a training.
So just swap it out there.
That I do a 10 first.
Yeah, cool.
So if we keep it on the 21st, I'll be here for that.
Yeah.
Okay. And the 5th, I'll, I'll be. That, we have. Yeah, we have a couple things that will happen on the 11th. Oh, that's when the book's presentation. The contractor.
So that's about the 5th.
We're gonna, we're gonna come between 1st.
We're gonna work session on the 21st.
And you will.
And we'll know work session on the 5th.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you look at that, 5th is in the 21st.
Yeah.
Has one. Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you for this marathon meeting. Marathon evening. I think I'll go ahead and adjourn us now at 8:45. Sleep well, everyone.